No, I think it's a popular concept. Definitely, I expected that now. Are we ready?
Yes.
Yes. Work session, all in order. Taking a look at the agenda, we're going to talk mill levy. It sounds like Suzie has some information about your Danny Gandy mill levy document.
Okay, so there's a few things in there really. This, this topic is mostly to prepare us a little bit more for December because December is when we have to certify our mills. So that, that document that Tina just showed is just a one pager from CD kind of explaining the mill levy process and that the bill that passed through legislation that's going to get us up to those 27 total program mills at the state level and really for us, it doesn't, it doesn't seem like a whole lot. It doesn't do a whole lot, but it's actually going to benefit us in the years to come. Cause we are one of those districts that's not that far away. So we're going to increase one mill a year where we've always been at, always 1998 or so. We've been at 19, I mean at 22.416 and so we're going to increase one mill a year until we get to 27. And so what that does is that's really putting more on local property tax instead of state. And so then that bucket that the state doesn't have to pay, then go with the program. And so even though right now it's our, our tax base that's getting us up to 27, once we're at 27, all these other districts around the state that we're at 14 or 15 are going to still be building up to that 27, meaning they're going to free up more money in the, in the state pot that then can be dispersed to us. So it's going to be a little bit more on us in these few years to get us there. But once we're there and there's still other states for the, I mean, still other districts for the next five years after us doing that, that's going to free up more money that'll help benefit us. So it's kind of a win and lose sort of thing. It is going to free up more money, but we're going to be paying for it right now for a little bit. So next month, when I bring the certification, we have not gotten our final assessed value from the assessor's office. We get that typically like the 27th, 28th of November. If that will turn it around and put everything in the document and kind of go through the whole process. The 23.416 is going to be what it is for total programs. And then remaining amount on there is then what we can collect based off of our mill levy overrides. And so Kat, if you could open that Excel doc, the mill levy, yeah, that one.
Mill levy November assumptions.
Yeah.
Good, because Excel won't open right now.
It's crashed. So when this document opens, this is what, this is what we will be looking at and if you can make it. These two columns, the left column was what you guys certified last December. And then the column to the right is what we've got so far this year. So really this, this 22.816 here is what we've been at since like 1998. That's bumped up to 23.816, we can't touch that. Going down here is where we got the, or what assumption is this voter approved. So last year we were at 30.054 and that is, that's to get us to 25% of total program. To get to 25% of total program this year, even though total program went up because the assessed values went up so much, the mills are actually going to drop. So if you could scroll down to the bottom, right here, I have the maximum overrecks. This is last year, we could collect just over 4 million. This year 25% gives us to 4,082,000. So we're getting to a higher dollar amount with less mills because of the assessed value. Does that make sense?
Yes.
So really that's what we're going to be talking about next meeting is where you guys want that number. Do you want to go to total, the max that we're allowed to, or is there, that's where you guys have that little bit of flexibility if you don't want the full amount. And so that's where we'll go there. And then if you go back up, sorry. Abatement that CD will give us that number, so it's nothing that we can choose, we just don't know that yet. So really it's just this 27 number that we're looking at next month. Any questions, thoughts and notes?
Discussion about that, thoughts on that?
One thing I would like to ask, there is a form letter that CDE has created that can teach the voters about, the voters and residents about this as a, it's like kind of like just a form letter. We can insert some of our, our taxes. Is that something that the board would like to do as, because right, they're going to see this increase for the next four years and wonder where that might be coming from. And really, I mean, it's an increase, but when you look back at that, it's an increase, it's an increase in dollars. So it's going to be an increase in dollars for people no matter what, because there's a values limit. But really it's a decrease in mills when you look year over year, because they don't see it broken out at that 22.816 and the other one, they just see total mills. So the total mills, even with that one increase, will drop this year. So there, so it is kind of a confusing topic and somebody that doesn't work in it, I mean, that you're going to be like, you're, we're increasing your mills, but really we're not. And so it's, it's definitely not the easiest topic to somebody that's not very fluent in it.
So yes. Have some students that could do some interpreting dance.
Love it.
Right?
Isn't it, oh, no, it's last month was our.
Okay. We're managing every month as part of like.
Is the form letter the same letter that we saw in our packet or is that a different letter?
It's a little different, like we can insert, it'll say specifically Manti Springs, here's how this impacts us for the next year. And I believe it might, I can't remember exactly, but it may show, for example, the second tab has sample tax estimates. You want to go through that all or?
Yeah, okay, can you go back into that first one?
We have maybe.
The one we were in.
Add some of that as well.
And then there's. Right, it's a D E R, I stand up. That would be a bad.
They welcome to my life. I have a bike.
And then you have that sample tax. So this, we put the, I took this together every year.
And I really.
Is that an enormous too, please?
Oh, yeah, sorry. Why is it craning the neck and then I'm going to have to get it?
And so this is based off of the projected assessed values that we got in October. I think we typically just get August and November, but they gave us another one in there. And so the numbers right here, and I use 100,300, 500,000. I know that's not realistic, but the 100,000 was the easy multiplier for people. So this section right here, they highlighted is what, what their taxes are going to be based off of what we know this year at those different levels. And then their line below it is what their taxes were last year. So even though the mills are lower, it's just showing that difference. So the total mills, if we went for the max, I sure would go be at 51.76. Last year they were at 53.144, but that, because of that assessed value, there is a tax increase.
Right.
For $9 for $100,000. So just kind of to outline, even though the mills are going down, taxes, I mean, assessed values are going up, so enough balance. That might be a way that we do it. So I have it for residential, then commercial, that their assessed value or their assessment rate at 29%. So I have that in there too.
Yeah, you also have enrollment trends in there, how is that?
Yes, so other thing, because we are so. There's another column, another Excel, maybe you could open that, or any of the Excel to you.
Enrollment.
Yep. Or do the other one real quick first, sorry, enrollment. We submitted October count last, our final October count last week. It'll get reviewed and then we'll go through that. So based off of the numbers that we submitted. Yes, that's perfect. Can you make that big? We have a couple of different numbers. So the first, the left column is what we put in the adopted budget. So our PPR per people revenue was just over $9,000 a student and we budgeted at 1375. So this, this was our total program number that's in our adopted budget, so 12.4 billion. Then we get October count, our October count was 1,302 students. So 73 less than what we projected, which was actually less than what CD projected for us. So a big drop there. But the PPR went up slightly, so we were at 939, 9,039. And then the actual is 9,110, but with that student drop, it would have been given us a $569,000 loss. That would be true at beginning in December. But there's that, we talked about it a few times averaging. So when you're declining enrollment, you're able to use the best of one year, two year, three or four year, or five year averaging, average enrollment. And so we're able to use that, which will, based off my estimates, and this isn't actual yet, but October count could come in a, or FTE for October count at 1,366.8, which actually will give us a little bit of an increase in enrollment. The reason that is, is 2019 was a high year, I think for like 1484 or something. So that's in our average. So we did the best of, we did the four year average. And so with that in there, it's really bringing it up. My concern is the past three years enrollment has dropped. So if we continue this trend and that 1484 goes off of the five year averaging, we're going to start to see some actual decline because we're, we're losing that figure in our average.
Right, probably pretty significant then. Such a large number.
So you just see how, just using that averaging formula, I mean, that's like almost a $600,000 sweep. Okay.
So there's just one question. So the total program number, is that the number that we based the 25% on the bill of the override or is there something else that's added to that?
Nope, that actually is.
That's it, okay.
I mean, there's a couple of little minor adjustments. But no, that's pretty much it.
Okay, thank you.
Thinking about the enrollment status, because I think that's important to think about right now. In fact, we're starting enrollment, I guess.
Open enrollment.
Campaign aspects.
Let me, all remember is when it starts statewide, let me be clear, statewide, open enrollment act November is when it starts.
Yes.
For the next full year. Eight, what?
And so you're hearing more ads earlier than I think I've heard in a long time. But the areas where we're seeing the most significant decrease enrollment is kindergarten and first grade. And then also 10th grade is, is a, is a bigger drop. And then we just know 7th grade at our middle school as well. So those are areas that our principals are aware of. And just making sure that we're doing everything to, to, to increase enrollment in those areas. But Maria and Chris are, we're going to do some K1, 2 enrollment time periods, like early April. Because what we're seeing is sometimes folks get accepted or they're, they're going to be in Manitou and then they don't complete that enrollment part. So we really want that to make that an experience in the spring. So Dustin and Maria, they just recently hosted their fifth grade, fifth graders to Manitou Springs Middle School. That's what they started today. They're so cute, they have their shirts on and just so that they get excited about being middle schoolers in our school district. And then also we know some of our sixth graders study Newcastle and choose schools as well. So these are trends that our, our regional school districts are also seeing in kindergarten. I don't think, I thought it would be kindergarten, but some are just holding, holding their children until things stabilize a little bit more.
I just filled out a survey today. It's for legislative council or something, some statewide survey, but they particularly brought out kindergarten because they know that that's kind of problem across. And why do, what do you think is attributing to your decrease in kindergarten? How are you planning on getting people back? So I mean, it's, I've heard it around, but I do the same survey every single year and I've never seen them target a specific grade level.
I am curious about that because the projections were since kids were kept out last year because of COVID, that they would almost be double time this year.
Right.
However, because of the instability and the uncertainties moving into the school year, I can see where with non compulsory attendance during kindergarten, that more parents went ahead and kept them out again. So it's curious, I mean, we can all make assumptions, I'd love to hear some data on it. And then I can't help but wonder from someone who sold a house in Crystal Hills and bought it in Cascade and living the Airbnb with neighbors all around me. If a lot of that has been impacted enrollment, housing prices in the neighborhoods, as well as some of the large amount of rental properties, especially unrestricted in, you know, the non affiliated areas. I mean, code enforcement in Manitou has worked on kind of narrowing how many Airbnbs and short term rentals, but I know of the past there are any.
But enrollment at Peak Pass Elementary School is some, is the more stable from year over year, which is, their kindergarten has 18 right now. Manitou elementary schools, kindergartens have about 15 students.
Do we know capacity for the kindergarten and first grade before low? I assume we have more capacity. The reason I asked the question is that at the early childhood council meeting last week, I believe, there's been mention of, of passing potentially being an issue, but I know that what came up last week was that awareness was very much down. Parents even with working within the district had shared that they weren't aware of, of even, well, the preschool program probably more importantly to this conversation, but obviously that, that leads into kindergarten and first grade. And so there was discussion around creating some events or thinking back beyond some of that's to create more awareness. Cause I will just say that, that what was brought up in those meetings and what is happening at that early childhood level is tremendous. And so really get that word out, I think, to the community and for students. They're on the leading edge as far as creating environments that are healthy and teaching kids what they need to know.
Great, and some of that being that university preschool may be just around the corner as well. And there's, there's some legislation that I'll continue to update you all on what that might be. But you're, you're right, this, this need for, for early, early education is, I mean, if he does it very well, I'd say extremely well. So let's make sure we call it soon.
But it sounds like we have space and we don't serve, the district doesn't charge for that, does it?
No, what we do, we have tuition for preschool for some students.
I mean, I would have just more parents are staying home because they can or whatever.
Some flexible work schedules. Yeah, like folks are able to work from home a little bit more and maybe one parent is now able to, to telecommute. So it's just shifted a lot of.
I think for some parents, at least parents that were working in the schools, particularly as para professionals that I've experienced, just said, it's not worth it for me to find childcare if we're going to quarantine, if kids are going to be in, they're going to be out. And so they just, so they homeschooled last year or they stayed home and now they're kind of like, oh, I can do this.
And I can travel if I want to.
I can, I can do a lot of things. And it turned out to be very liberating for them for their work dynamic change so that they could be home and a lot more people work from home. And kind of like Colorado Department of Education, just never going back to their offices. So, um, yeah, so I think our dynamics have shifted, so we have to, we might have to shift for that, the environment if it doesn't.
Some marketing.
Well, I agree that the things that we're doing, which is actually, I was, it was enlightening for me to, to see what we're doing, including some state support. To be a practitioner outside some of this listening therapy, bringing in really teaching the kids around wellness and around their bodies and understanding them and how to manage situations and the state regulation. All of this good stuff is happening and they're getting good results with regard to student engagement. These are things parents wouldn't be able to do on their own. And so those would be the pieces that we, and I'd be happy to share with regard to messaging, but those are the things that an individual parent wouldn't be able to deliver.
That's one of the things that we're really talking about, how do we tell our story to all families, especially as they move into the community and they feel connected. So that, that sometimes folks assume that Manitou is part of Colorado Springs School District. They don't realize it for some time. So that's, that's easy education that we can do.
Good on attendance.
I'm going to ask that letter, do you all think that's something to send out to, to, it's a, we can kind of tweak it a bit, but it does have good content.
Send out to families, okay?
Yes.
I think so.
Do you like it?
It's, it basically takes this language here, kind of puts it in, in more accessible language and then enters our numbers.
So we bring in and that, or I mean, put like you and I.
Yeah, we can do.
Count it up and then bring it to the December board.
Yeah.
That would be nice. I'm also wondering then if we send it out, if we can also post it on the website.
Yeah.
And to be one of those people, if it comes in the mail, I may not look at it or I'll glance at it, but, but I'll, I scan websites more often.
So we can bring it, drop it next person.
Yeah, jump in.
I just wanted to back up one to the mill levy. My opinion on the mill levy is we should stay at the voter approved. My, that's my personal opinion, just because we have so many things that need to get done. It's just going to have a little bit of money, but every little bit in this district will help. And that was voter approved. And I think that we should, it's nice to drop it, but I'd rather see it stay. That's good.
Thank you. Other, other thoughts on that? I mean, now's the time to discuss, not that we won't be able to discuss the next meeting as well, but certainly.
That makes sense, so the 27 point whatever mills was the maximum we could ask for.
We don't, we don't have a maximum mills, we just have maximum of total program, which then I back into the mills.
Okay, so the number you showed those.
Yeah, the numbers I showed was the maximum based off of the numbers I have right.
And then you divide that by.
With that comment, do you, do you want us to run different, different scenarios, just so you can see it or you will find with.
I'm pretty comfortable with that.
Okay.
I'll agree. Go.
Okay. Awesome. That's all.
Okay, awesome. All right.
Yeah, this shouldn't not take too long. I know in the last end statement, we kind of just talked about when I first started, we created these monitoring tools that we have year over year data. And the last one said, oh, it'll increase, the tenants will increase and that really can, can be hard to say, oh, it increased or it didn't increase. So I, I did some more connections to this work if you want to pull up. These notes are going to, sorry, they're not here, they're going to be in your notes this year. So, so kind of looking at our, our, our districts that are similar and maybe size to, to our school district and where we want to be. Just kind of setting those targets at around 95% for elementary, 94% for middle school and 93% for high school. This is above where other, other schools districts are in our county, but still, still attainable, but also looking towards attendance matters as, as we know. So I just wanted to share that with you all. Get any thoughts or questions about it?
Sounds good. Yeah, it's hard to continue to improve, improve, improving. So if you get to 100%, they're going to get to, doesn't make sense.
And this, this elementary rate is 95% will take significant, we're sitting at about 93%. So we're going to need to work hard on that number, but I think our goal is, we do this as a team and it's not, it's not punitive in that sense. And in fact, I gave Tina a great, around set unambitious goals. And I, I think that's a weird term, unambitious goals in policy governance. But really that's not to say you're not trying to attain ambitious goals, but what is reasonable, knowing that we're working with people in a lot of different circumstances. So these are, I think these are ambitious, but also achievable.
Well, I think, yeah, that's the difference than when people talk about big hairy audacious goals, right? BHAG, because those are your visionary goals. Those are your like out of reach, multi-year, big, this is what we're aiming for, this is, right? And these are, what are we looking to do? It's kind of almost like, for those of you again who are on Noom over, over COVID, it's a little cognitive coaching weight loss app, right? You're going to lose this much this week, that much this week, I'm going to run this week, right? You're setting these very reasonable progress monitoring goals, right? And that's what we do is monitor progress towards the eventual big goal.
Members are in our strategic plan, so just working for this. And then the other part, I just wanted to give you an update. Well, when I shared the data around out of school suspensions and it's, that was high for Manitou Springs Middle School. Dustin also agreed and he and Maria went back to that data and worked with Christina Baker. And there was, the way that they were entered, they were being calculated like almost double, so it was not as high. So there was actually a decrease in suspensions last year at the middle school. So I'm not going to correct that in the, in the, exactly, sorry, the end statement, but I'll just make a note of it next year when we go to post it, that why there was a change there. So since you've already approved the end statement, I just wanted to correct that for you if you have any questions. It seemed off and it was.
Um, CASB delegate assembly. So that was fine, as much as it was hiring to get up and drive up to court call learns for it. It's always good to be around other school board members. Interesting discussions, some big picture when some of the resolutions get on the floor. Some, you get to go to the microphone, you get to have some discussion. A lot of what we do here, I don't think you probably want to go. A little bit again has to do with funding, has to do with local control. Some districts particularly Telluride and Boulder Valley brought forth some really kind of big issues like around climate change. You know, world peace, very global issues. And the discussion from other districts was, it's not that those aren't great things, but we are the Colorado Association of School Boards. What, what really is our jurisdiction, what is our purview? And the idea that if we really address curriculum, instruction, local control and budgeting, right? And, and funding mechanisms at the state level so that we are adequately funded, then that gives each of us as school districts the resources and the rights and the authority to take on some of these global issues if we so choose, rather than CASB, you know, putting that on their advocacy agenda and legislative agenda for the year. So I'm happy to speak to any of these that were passed that you see, if you'd like, but I don't see necessity of taking that considerable. Have some questions about them.
What was the zaniest one?
Um.
Cause it had to be at least one of those.
Yeah, and I think that, I don't know if it is zany, but definitely one, I, I think if you saw the little article I wrote that I spoke to, it was a floor resolution. And there's not often floor resolutions. Resolutions from the floor are ones that don't get submitted and it's kind of last minute like, hey? And that one really had to do with how we look at the budgeting from a more global research based perspective. And what does it mean to, what does it mean to have quality schools? And what does that affect size and what schools are we looking at and what does that mean, right? Here's this research, what does this research really mean in application? And I think some people hadn't gotten into the research and weren't really sure what the very kind of professorial type person from Telluride was putting out there. And so after some discussion, I think kind of it turned the tide. Cause some people are like, I don't even know what you're talking about, right? And so that's what happens when you write floor resolutions and people don't get a chance to read them ahead of time and do their research. Whereas the rest of the resolutions, I'm assuming most people did some. Lot of them were reworded, which it takes a considerable amount of time because then somebody is making a motion to edit and a motion to approve. And then discussion and then edit, and you can only do two, motion for two different edits. Then you have to approve those edits and then go back and approve, right? And so a lot of it was to make them more. And so a lot of it was to make them more wordy and make them more understandable and to make sure there's obviously no unintended consequences to some of the resolutions. But again, most of them from the school boards were to hold the state accountable for the funding mechanisms. That was quite a bit of it. Rural schools continue to struggle with connectivity and would like uh, support from that for the state. The rural schools also, if you noticed, if you did read any of them, asked for a starting K of forty thousand dollars for every teacher, yet they don't have any money to support that. So then where would that money come from? So there was some real discussion about, yes, teachers are absolutely worth every penny. But if you, you know, what is the funding mechanisms? If you don't have the money, you don't have the money. So it was, and, and, and it allows, many of those discussions, Beadman Lee went back to, if we were fully funded, we would not have all these piecemeal resolutions if the state fully funded us. So that was the gist of that. The bacon was good.
What is the feeling?
Bacon is always good? Yes?
The feeling around that, around fully funded, what, what is the feeling, or did you feel a pulse there? They feel confident, they feel, uh?
Oh, I don't think they feel confident. They feel very resolute in that this is not something that we, we can take our eyes off of. Like the state has to fund us, because, you know, everybody is in particularly, you know, encroachment of special education services, which are more and more, we know with behavioral and mental health throughout our country. But if we're gonna focus on our district and the state, right, huge amounts of money, lack of services, lack of also service providers. Like even if we had the money, where are we gonna find all these people to fill these jobs? So that was a huge concern, right? You know, where are we finding these people? How much are we going to pay them? How are we gonna do what we've been asked to do by the state? Which again goes back to local control, but you know, you're putting all these mandates on us, but you're not funding us. So those were huge concerns.
So one of the districts, then they did, you know, start talking about getting together with, if this doesn't happen, like you said, the state does need to do this. And if it doesn't happen, here's what's going to happen. Here's what the districts are prepared to do. Because just asking doesn't seem to be any good job done.
Well, so that is kind of, you know, the advocacy through CASB. And when we get together, we've talked about, we went to some Region Six dinner down in Pueblo, what was that, in October for CASB? I think that's the conversations that when we get together with CASB, which is why the next thing I'm gonna talk about is CASB, the Winter Conference. You know, even if you're not there for all the days, what days can you make it? Because that's a great place to network with other board members and superintendents and really get kind of the fire and the pulse of what's going on around the state. And what are we going to do? Remember, I mean, CASB has great things going on, but then remember, they are a paid advocacy group, right? So their job is to be, you know, the advocate for school boards. So that's how they make their money. They're a resource for us, but they're also kind of, you know, they're the ones that go and go up to the legislator and say, hey, these are the things that need to happen. They have, in some ways, you know, they want incremental change, but they're not kind of looking to significantly change status quo perhaps. And so I think that's gonna be individual boards getting together and having that discussion about what are we as board members? What kind of coalition can we form along with our superintendents to make some movement, right? I think that's, if that's what you're talking about, that's what it's gonna take. It's gonna take a grassroots efforts of me saying, hey, you, you, what do you think about this? Can we get together? What, do we need to find like a social media platform to do this? What, how are we, you know, Slack channel, right? Start a project on Asana? I don't know, but we need some workflow and get that moving forward.
Okay.
The governor's budget this year, the proposed budget, we know that's gonna change over time, but the purpose of people funding looks to be increasing and they're trying to buy down, it's, I can't remember what, how many millions of the budget stabilization. But we'll see what actually pushes through in legislation.
And how long that lasts, right? Like you said, you know, it shouldn't, it shouldn't be dependent on who's in the governor's office.
In some ways, they're, they're, the concern is that is this going to be increased for one or two years because of these federal stimulus pressures? So we can't count on that being where poor people is funded ongoing.
There, um, the projection was that grows based off of inflation and they use the Denver Boulder inflation rate, which I think was four point seven percent compared to the national, that just came out last week of six point two. So the thought is it may even go up, that this, usually the governor's proposal sometimes is a little bit like shooting for the stars. Um, but they think that there's actually maybe a little bit lower than what it's gonna be. And for us, that equates to five hundred and twenty-three dollars per student increase. So it was very significant. And the, the budget stabilization factor, I don't remember the number it's gonna be up, but it will be the lowest in, in section of. It, it looks positive, but how long can they sustain that? Right, because that's what we're victims of in public education, is this political wave of funding and defunding and grants and no grants. So you get this really great program, maybe a partnership going, it lasts for two, three years, you finally get it to full momentum. And then bam, funding is cut, it's gone, and you're looking for another resource. And that's been the wave through for public education constantly, at least for the last three decades. I can't speak to before that.
Like that early literacy grant, that's a grant that we really shouldn't have applied for. And literacy should just be, but we have to apply for it each year. And that's really to support some of our, our processes around dibbles and those sorts, but.
And C D, you should probably be held accountable for some of its choices too. I mean, moving from Enrich to Ansar, you know, which is, you know, for some people will be, you know, considerable when you look at the amount of districts that, the amount they have to pay for that and then the changeover and the disruption. So I think there needs to be more rationale for some of those large, those large changes at the state level.
Give me, excuse me, how much, so there's such, that's like, I'm gonna come in from the state, how much of that money is taken from the extra mills? Because of whatever, eleven, two sixty-four, whatever that bill was about.
I don't know that, but that is something I could definitely look into, find out and break to the December.
Just curious, cause I mean, it's kind of a cost shifting thing, is how I look at it. So are they just giving us our money back, which is better than having them keep it?
Yeah, I'll, I'll bring that next. So CASB, what are you, have you guys thought about attendance so far? We have days, who do we need to confirm with? Elizabeth?
I think just that, told Kendall and I, Melissa to sign, sign stuff.
Okay.
It's the second through fourth of December.
Yeah, I'm looking at that Friday and that Saturday. With skin, behavioral, mental health. I think you guys are working with Paula, Iger? Okay, so she's gonna be coming and working with my schools.
Significant influence or part of the nurse acupuncture model.
Yeah, so she's gonna be working with us.
I can do on the Friday, I can do the keynote and the lunch. So the keynote and the lunch. Sometimes I can sneak in another one of the sessions, but usually. It's first Friday at our box.
Yeah.
Seems all, it's all we know.
It's always.
I won't be able to, because December first, I'm going in to get another part of my body to be built, so.
Better be built and removed, huh?
Yeah.
He's bionic.
Yeah.
I'm getting new knees, so.
Got it. Are you guys gonna be able to make it?
Yeah, is there, where's the agenda?
Um, it's on, so you can go to CASB's website.
All right. It looks like I could. And parts of that.
Yeah, I'll look at the agenda, the second's the only idea I've got any potential to do it.
Okay. It's the second. Gus will wait and then Tina will do it.
I can, all day on Friday and then maybe second, I don't, I don't wanna spend money on Saturday. Unless it's included, it didn't look that amazing. So I didn't wanna get there and then blow it off.
So just Friday.
Yeah.
Okay. And Sundays usually just like early.
They even have Sunday, I thought it was Thursday, Friday and just happy on Saturday.
So, yeah, that's right.
That just looked like a lot of keynotes and, I don't know, some of the topics, since I'm in the business, I'm kind of like, yeah, I already got a gist of what that is. I think so.
Okay, so Natalie the third, Gary the, Jack the second. Gus, we'll see, and then Tina Friday, is that right? Thank you.
Great bond ballot outcome decision. Discussion, oh yes.
So the first part is just, are we gonna let press know, right? So the, the deadline to submit an intent to reapply is November thirtieth. So need some direction from the board around what we wanna do.
So if we reapply, we're reapplying with the intent then to go for another bond, right? That's what we're committing to, does not committing to anything, then we're going for another bond.
We'd have to, because our match is so hot and there's nothing that.
Yeah, we don't have the money for it, okay.
Unless we did like a roof or, and how do we draw a roof? I don't know if we could cover a roof with our, our reserve.
Like a security vest.
A security, a security vest.
Is there any downside to sending a letter of intent?
I don't think so.
It doesn't cost any.
I think you said if we pull, it would look bad. It was, pull if we get accepted and then we decide not, like if it goes forward and we don't get accepted for, we don't decide to move forward with the bond. So, so that's what we, we agree. But, um, the intent is really that, I think it's just that we're gonna attempt to apply. Um, we would have to turn around an application pretty quickly. So, so that's where, what, what applications we want for is important.
But I guarantee, with the intent and you have to reapply, that we will be successful again. Pretty positive?
I mean, I, we put together a solid proposal. I think we weren't, we were in the seventy-five percent category. Yeah, and so I would say we have a good chance, because all of those people ahead of us now are getting off of the list. And then we kind of get thrown back into that pool. I would think we had a favorable review of our grants last year.
Last year was a very, um, the best grant was funded at probably one of the higher levels that it's been funded in the past. And we don't know what the funding looks like yet for next year, so it's hard to say. But I do think that, I mean, we had, we did not have any real negative feedback from our proposal when we did our interview or anything like that. It was pretty positive from the board.
What the community did and we noted it down and that kind of thing, which in my opinion, that really saddens me that our community took that stance on a few dollars when I've lived here all my life and I thought this community was more supportive of the schools. And so for whatever reason that they chose not to, it kind of, it kind of upsets me that to think that I'm in a community that pretty much turned down a school. And they would, you know, in a, the city administration, I never heard any positives coming out of there saying they're gonna support us, which is sad. So I would hope that if we reapply, that the best grant board doesn't look at that and go, or are we wasting our time? Will the community push something through this time? Cause the needs that we put on, in front of everybody was needed. That wasn't anything that was frivolous or whatever, in my book, it was for the future of the children. And I tell you why, it makes me feel that I joined this board for helping getting education, the best education we can for this community. And, you know, if you don't have that support from the community, it's really, it's really sad. It's a sad thing.
I received the, I received opposite, I received everyone that comes to me, they were horrified it failed and activated to get it to pass. So it actually, I think, may have pushed folks to be more involved.
And I think that honestly, you know, we, we went out to the people for this X amount of dollars that we knew the needs. And I think if we were to do another bond issue, I would support that we do the same amount of money, because we're not, we're not sitting here, you know, all of a sudden you come back and say, oh, I'm gonna ask for twenty. People are gonna look at you and go, what were you trying to do before? I don't, you know, I don't think we should do that. I think if we do it, we need to stay in the same setting that we started this year.
I might be getting a little ahead of, do we do a letter of intent for the best grant, which I'd be totally supportive of.
Yeah, I mean, I certainly believe that we need to move forward. I think, you know, Gary, I agree, it's, uh, it's sad. I just also feel like as a leader, you know, and a person that I always look at myself first. I've talked to some people that are friends that I know didn't vote for the grant, I mean, the bond. And in conversations with them, some of them, you know, very honestly and articulately and not subtly told me their thoughts. And I appreciate that, because they're still friends. And then others, when we talked more deeply about it, went, oh, I didn't know that, or I didn't hear that. So that tells me we need to do a better job and we need to start right away. And as a leader, that's good feedback, to say, we probably need to get more information out. Because Suzie, when she's talking about the bond, if she did, I'm gonna assume, but maybe, is gonna have a different slant than when I'm talking about it, than when you're talking about it. And I think that having a more coherent, cohesive voice is necessary. And so I think we maybe did rely on people generosity and, and past practice in some cases. And so I think we have to acknowledge the climate, I think we need to acknowledge that there were some doubt and fear and concern in people's mind. And for some people, it really might be a financial burden. I'm not gonna, you know, in, in adaptive schools, as you know, I am loving right now, there's this thing, a hundred reasons, a hundred reasons why. Before we, you know, blame or question, what's a hundred reasons why somebody said something or did something? And so I think we need to figure out what those hundred reasons are for the people who didn't vote for it. And that's what we need to address. And so I think starting now, by the intent is the first step. And then we need to really talk to people, the community, get out, the coalition that is fired up. Let's engage and figure it out, what is that bond package? Because again, when we had an open house at my house, somebody asked, what is the plan B? I'm like, there is no plan B. Take a look at the funding and look how much roofs cost and major construction costs. And look how long that has been deferred. So we have to do something. We can't do nothing. That's any thoughts or jumping on all this or just?
I support. Intent to apply.
Thank you.
And, uh, and to work and flush out all of this when time comes.
I, I, I think, I, I'm sorry, Gus.
Well, just to say the strategy and a lot of what's being said is, is pertinent and important. And we understand, we are at a time in this, not only this nation, but in this planet, on this planet. There's tremendous amount of fear and that plays a tremendous role in all of, whether it's the bond, whether it's mass, no mass vaccines, no max vaccines, fear is playing a role. The issues are less the, the issues, it's people's response. And, and so it will take a very thorough educational process and in ways that people are going to be able to see it, because when you're in that fearful, dysreguished state, can't see facts or, or non-facts, you know, you can't see pulses. Either you're not able to process, you're reacting to state of fear. And I think a lot of that played a big role in this.
I think, I think we're not too far off. I really think that this bond can pass in this, in this community, a good bond. And I think that we have the right people here and I'm, I'm really thankful that we have an intact board to go through this. I think when I look at other school districts around the region, the state and the nation, the fact that we get to stay intact like this is really powerful and it's a great opportunity that I know colleagues in other districts are not experiencing right now. So first, I'm gonna say that, that's exciting. And then the other question I have is, Um and then the other question I have is, so this intent to apply, the the applications that we have ready. And that would not take significant uh coming back or the the one around the. Ways and the the six twelve addition renovation. So that's what we have to put intent to forward and and I can't remember if it's specific to. Do you mind looking at that?
Look at it.
Sorry, thanks, Gus.
A question on that while she's checking um something just popped in my head around uh someone's comments around uh. That's grant application. Taking this opportunity, are there other avenues for application besides the roof? And the things that we've already applied for for best grant that. We could take advantage of, that maybe we missed or?
We might be able to and and actually Matt Willhun, who he's not under contract with us, he's offered to help out some more. So like there's something else that we wanted to add to a best grant and see what that would take some of the. Safety and security parts uh somewhere else. And so we could try to look at that, it would still, our match is still high, our match is at sixty five. Sixty five, yeah, and so so whatever we do, it's still, it it can bring up, but it could take down the overall bonding path, yes.
Yeah, so if there's any way we shuffle to where, you know, the community is funding a little bit less because best grants picking up additional. And we take this. This this failure passage as an opportunity and we could, we could achieve that if we want. I don't, I don't know.
Yes, if we submit the intent, does it say?
Yeah, so it's pretty basic, um I don't wanna click, it says next. I don't think there's a whole lot more, but there is an optional anticipated project type in there. Um and it gives the options of new school, major renovation or addition, HVAC or electrical. Um security, roof replacement, technology, CTE overcrowding and grow. Removal of American Indian mascots or multiple projects in multiple schools. So it's kind of basic, it says optional, but I don't think that it probably really is optional.
Can you check one to one?
Yes, I'll check all.
And Cheryl, who's our best representative, she's really good about, she can sit with Suzie and I and say, here's. Here's how you might be able to tweak that roof and your entryway, increase that, take some of the things off of the. Of other aspects, so we can maybe get that ass down, but get more from the best, that's questions.
Was there any way that there's some issues that we know that you have immediate attention? That we can't really afford, is there any way that you could say we could go uh and. I don't know, say do a do a loan to do something like that? Banking on the best grant to repay that in the future, can you do that?
I don't, I mean, I think if we had to do a certificate of purchase, it would be pretty significant. And then um we're not guaranteed that these, what was great about these best monies is that they were all cash. We weren't gonna have to do a COP and so we're not assured. But that was the case, so I think if we took a loan and then take another one potentially with best, that would be. You have to be debt free on your assets.
Yeah, and depending on if there was something that we absolutely didn't need, there is always like a lease option or some sort of thing. I mean, we did that with our um when we got the new football lights, lights on the football soccer field. That was a three year thing, so we've done it with the iPad when we first rolled that out, so we've done it in the past. So there are options for. Like that if we absolutely needed to, it's not always the greatest look, but if we ran into it.
I'm just looking at the worst case, the word, we didn't get this, we didn't get that. Still need to do these items, how are we going to do to on what works or what?
The other option would be that um certificate of purchase eventually, we needed to take a. Uh a second, but like more we got on our one of our assets would probably be a worst case, that would be in our warehouse. The um so what I think I hear, I wanna make sure, we're submit, well, intent to reapply. I I would like it, I think it would be important before the next board meeting. If I could pull Matt Willhun together and he and Cheryl and Suzie and I kind of get some potential game plans going. Um around what that would look like and we can bring that here in December, does that sound okay for him? I did meet with um several stakeholders since the election and get some good feedback. One of the stakeholders recommended uh when if the if the board decides to move forward was another valid issue that um. That we host, for example, some panels, some panels that would include like uh some large construction. Uh and owners reps, subcontractors, and the chamber of commerce. And so that we can really educate and say, this is why, this is why our schools need the supports and these upgrades. And and let us do some school tours in some other districts to see.
That's what I was gonna suggest, if we need to go to Matt's most recent progress, you know, one of them is Sam Creek.
Yes.
Elementary from a K five to a K eight. Um and I happened to be there from the last year, year before. Um I know we can't take everybody back to Salida and um that's not practical, but walking through that school, I think, would be. Advantageous for a lot of people to see, I know um that was another thing, if somebody talked to me about, well, you know, you're making people work too hard to get the information. And going to these different nights and I said, well, Jesse backed me up on this, but former social studies teachers, we can, we can proclaim our rights. But we also have responsibilities as citizens and they are of equal measure. So if we wanna talk about rights, we talk about responsibility of a democratic citizenry. So um I would be getting out and getting the information, um not waiting for it to land on your lap. So I think inviting people to all these things, Jesse's like, Tina, stop talking to me about things.
I one hundred percent agree.
Thank you, sir. So um you know, to to see it is different than hearing it when you walk through those buildings.
That sounds great, so we'll work on that, we can meet with um Cheryl and also Matt and try to figure out some of those numbers and get that that information.
Matt recommend different levels of funding as well, because obviously the max, we only need to get the nine million dollars, it's only sixteen million or seventeen million, let me, if you ever take a million. Um so that's a pretty low number, so I I think there should kind of be like a. Uh you know, looking at priorities and I I think we kind of did this, although it's kind of hard to to follow through, but you know, priority. And I know these were all listed, but just they weren't listed on one page, priority, one, two, three, four, for each school. You know, all the priority ones on on one page, so not it'd be by school, but the priority ones that'll be on one page, then priority twos. And then going on to the six through twelve addition and kind of breaking that out so people can, so we, first of all, can see it, have a really good understanding of it. So we know what we're putting forward and and really identifying the the urgent needs as opposed to things that may be less urgent. Would be my suggestion, but I'll set it up to you.
There anything else, Suzie? We wanna talk about choice camps? Yeah, I think that's um probably some of the, I wouldn't say. PR and damage control, is that the right word, um that we have to really think about? And I think this is important, some of the false information that was shared or in the rhetoric around choice that became. In several forums, pretty pretty negative and I receive feedback or receive feedback from some of our staff who have children. Who are choice families, um just like, what does that mean? And and so I I just would, I don't know, I think that's something that we have to attempt to very thoughtfully and certainly around. How how that has fit and landed on some of our our choice families and also the staff. So just wanted to put that out there, that came up in our DAC meeting as well.
Or like careful about that or?
Um I mean, I'm just. Um you know, and they were, they were pointed, but they also felt really confident that we should continue to report the original plan. The election next year, that they were willing to put in more time and energy.
What were their comments about choice?
Um it was kind of the same conversation of just, they really felt like in general, there was a lot of misinformation, there were a lot of hurt feelings. Um. Yeah, I mean, it is, it's, I think it's. It's horrible to be told that your kid doesn't contribute to a school and another kid does. So I think that's what they're feeling. So yeah, I mean, if you're speaking in general, it's just, it's hurtful, so. But that's, but I don't feel like they were like. Did you want us, I think, probably to.
Address it.
Actively, yes. And their comment being, we we pay taxes in other communities for other other people's children. And we're happy to support those initiatives in other communities. So that that just is gonna be something that I think we have to really be cognizant of. So if you all have some ideas, we're actually in our in our leadership group, we're gonna be looking at some of these facilitated process meetings, just to have open conversations in. Um we talked about as well, just like we would do a forum or panels for why why this type of improvement matters in schools. But also school finance, I think school finance is so complicated and if we can bring that component and really teach and educate. Then that people dispel some of this.
That's a great idea. School finance is.
And we talked about it, even like bringing somebody from, like not me, some, just somebody else, so it seems like it.
Yeah, a third party, yeah, it's objective, somebody from CDE or stuff, yeah, it'd be nice to get them in.
Okay.
So we're running out of time, in fact, we are out of time. Um and so we still have agenda setting. That's why I always do that.
It feels late.
It feels, no, I always do that, even without the time thing, I think it's like an hour, maybe it's because every single meeting I'm in is like scheduled and hours zoomed by.
I give you thirty minutes.
That's good, except for the background before the next meeting, that's nice that it's got time. So good on the ballot bond discussion for now, okay, and moving forward, agenda setting discussion. I know we've talked about this before, but um we don't really have a process. Um and we can't vote on agenda items for the agenda. But we start with generally, right, the monitoring reports for the calendar, things that are coming up, policy work that needs to be completed. Things uh you know, I would like personally to get back to really talking about the strategic plan, monitoring the strategic plan. I feel like the boards, a policy governance board, our job really is to do that, we've agreed to a strategic plan. And then discuss what the monitoring of that plan looks like. Um and then that is for Elizabeth and her staff to bring that to us, as well as some of these other big picture issues. Um what are your thoughts on that? And what the process might look like?
I guess I thought the process was, you know, I would say, oh, can we talk about choice students in the next agenda? You would say, does anyone else wanna have that on the agenda? You can kind of work to see if there was a majority and then you get to.
That that's kind of what we're doing now.
So do the the work session for the meeting?
Could be, we'd be working a month out.
A month out. So that might be the thing, is it agenda? Or is it, you know, do setting a concern? Or do we need to separate work session from? The regular session, and we've discussed that a couple of times, because then there's a fairly large gap in between. And it feels like, gosh, we talked about all these things and then there's other things. So I don't know, do you wanna speak to it? Because I I think I think.
We're just trying to get things on the agenda, if you wanna talk about something, so it gets addressed and trying not to have that be. I mean, we wanna be somewhat, you know, constrained and have some guardrails, but we want, we don't wanna say, I don't think, at least I certainly don't wanna say that. We, nobody can ask a question unless it's clearly uh referenced to something in the district twenty one, twenty two action plan or the. For effective schools in district, then we need to have a little more margin than that because we are made it to, so we maybe could bump up against guardrails if. That's all.
Yeah?
No, that's it.
Okay, well then.
So yeah, we can do it for me, I mean, that probably isn't the end of the world to do that, I mean, there's not many things that are emergent, although the bond thing moved, you know, pretty quick last year. That's pretty, we're pretty quick again this year.
Yeah, that's for Gary, any intent on that?
I think it's. I like the, I guess, you know, if you wanna specify something, maybe specify something in the work session of uh. Anybody have anything for the next month agenda at that point? Give it to you.
We'll decide what everybody, if everybody feels like it's something to bring up, okay?
Yeah, I mean, that sounds reasonable to me and I don't know if we want anything. As a emergency option, you know, so if I have something, I just, this is really pressing. Um which would be. Not a regular thing, I don't know if we wanna address anything like that, but I mean, so far, everything we've discussed would be. Something I would support.
We could amend the agenda during the regular meeting if something like that came out. That would totally follow our rules.
I I think like if something pops up, we're like, this came up at the preschool meeting and I really think it's important, I wanna bring it. Um if it's, if it's not right up to the meeting, it doesn't require more data collecting, but you say I wanna add it, that's not a.
Yeah, and that's kind of when we talk about board development, that would be, we're on different committees, if we were going to talk about. For example, Gary and I had something to share from the past posse's, you have to share something from the super attendance. Uh with the student council, right, DAC, those would be the kind of things that during that board development, that would be that share out time for us. Right, that that isn't another agenda item necessarily, not an action item, just kind of maybe a context or informational.
I think anything like for the next agenda that requires our team to gather information and bring it, that's what we would wanna know. In advance and if, yeah, something comes up, but um because I have to just, like if you call and we ask a question, that's, that's, that's one thing. Um but as much as we can prepare for that, that'd be very.
And the main reason of that is to keep ourselves focused, there's big picture items and there's little things that I might just have a question about, which again, would be the board development section. Um but if it starts to get into, right, and that's what we decide and that's what we're here to discuss, right? Is if it starts to take us away from agreed upon work, you know, I I could go forever about some of these Q choose. I mean, but I don't think that's a valid topic.
I think another big part, right, is if it's, if it's. We'll end up being um that and folks don't jump on the call because they don't want to discuss. That's the biggest issue, right?
That is absolutely, I mean, when you're a public board, people are looking at the agenda to see if there's something that they want to engage in, if they want to speak to. And so that's why, although, yes, we can amend, in general, we don't do it very often, we don't make it a habit, it's if it's an emergency item. And or if it's something that, you know, maybe we talked about putting on, we all forgot or something, then we would, but as much as possible, we don't. I mean, just for that transparency piece for a public board. Same with executive session, you try not to use that, just um some people use that just to have like a private meeting, that's absolutely acceptable.
So we're saying we would use for uh board development as that time to say, hey, I'd like to throw this on an upcoming agenda.
Well, during the work session, I think that's when we can talk about other agenda items and we can leave space on the work session to do that, because there might be dialogue about it. Whereas that board development might might be like a reporter, just like a, hey, just so you guys know, I was at this meeting and this happened. Not a huge discussion, no action needed, nothing from staff, just like a heads up about something.
Well, we have the final enrollment numbers by next, by December's meeting to get the total enrollment and the breakdown of all the numbers and kids placing out, that's what.
Typically, we get those like that after Thanksgiving, um I feel like Steve's a little bit backed up. So. Pretty much what we submit is is what gets taken forward, so that's that enrollment that we see right now. But sometimes a student might show up somewhere else, so if we think they're not here, they show up or so it doesn't change dramatically, but yeah.
But you wanted tracking is what I just heard.
Well, because we've had graphs before that showed, you know, and I saw the one graph that was in the middle, lefty part of it. But I mean, the the numbers, the in district, the out of district, the kids that are in district that are choicing out to other districts. I think that data is valuable, especially as our enrollment's going down, because those are really, I mean, to Gus's point of marketing order, we need to market, you know, to the kids that are. Right here, because that should be laying fruit, this by administrative people like to say.
Once we get the report from CDE, then I pass on that to the twenty and they compile, I know, you've seen it before, it's a chart, like where our kids are coming from, where our kids are going. So we'll typically, we turn that over right away and hopefully in January, we'll get that back from.
And that is posted on CDE, am I not correct for at every single year for where they all go. We can give where our kids that we have came from, we don't know where our kids went to, so that's why we give it to D twenty. All the area schools do it, they do it both, but yeah, so I'm pretty sure that that is on.
It is on CDE. It is on CDE, on where they're going, or where they came from, but not where they're going.
Yes.
And speaking of, like, we're working on, we pulled Connie and Christina Baker, and that we pulled from Power School, where did all students? Left the district, in district, or out of district, go, and we can see exactly that, so that's the information that I'm working out for you all. As soon as we can see that, because what we're seeing, like, at secondary, oftentimes it's an online school. And so we're like, we don't have an online school, so if someone's looking for for that here in manatee. But we also want to understand the nature of the community, so, or or more students at the middle elementary school actually moving out of the state or the region. We can see exactly that, so we're working on looking at those things for specifically for in district and out of district. And seeing that, you know, some of our local schools are going to be closing schools this this next year, we learned some changes about the high school programmatically. And in a potentially positive way, some circumstances in some school districts could really affect our enrollment in a different way, so. That's the kind, this is really good, if we get that question now, then that's aligned to what we are having, and I would also add. If you, if you look out to like the next meeting, and you say, okay, like, we're going to be talking about. School presentations that we passed elementary school, I'd really like to know this about the past, then I can make sure that that the presentation. That's helpful. For example, the Mill Levy discussion tonight, it wasn't on this packet, but we decided to add it and move it up early, so you're not hearing that. For the first time next month, that's too far, that's too.
I didn't know if Miss Johnson had something to add, or she's just kidding.
No, I'm good.
I didn't know if you were trying to get my attention or not. But you did.
But you usually do have tracking on, say, I take my child out of manatee. You'll sit down with me and say, why are you doing this? And they don't have to tell you, correct, but usually generally.
Yeah, so when the request for records happen, or before that, principals will sit down with, or counselor will say. Why are you choosing home school, is there something that we could do to keep you here, or whatever? But we do, we can track of that.
So, okay, never mind, that would get to programmatic question.
So we can, we can just share that with the next next meeting to see where in district and out of district.
Right, next item is the COVID updates.
Yeah, thanks, this is one I added short notice, so I shouldn't take too long. So as you know, since last meeting, and even Natalie with the Berkeley City on on some of these things, but. The the meeting on Friday with the health department was that this guidance was going to come out today, it didn't come out, they gave some guidance on making sure that. Folks are getting vaccinated, so I called that Deanne Reiber, she is assistant director for the health department. And really, what's in the works is that these changing around, changing protocols around. Quarantine and making it more targeted, I think I've shared with each of you. My, my thoughts is that these changes will happen after the winter winter break. I also want to get some feedback and thoughts from you all around our mask order in Manatee Springs, and so I, we have. Our next meeting is in December fifteenth or fourteenth, we have a board of education meeting the night before. But I wanted to to have this special discussion with you all first around the mask order, with some of the changes, I would imagine some of our. Other school districts will maybe potentially remove those, so. Just wanted to open this up, and I know that the mask. Enforcement or is is extremely hard in some places and easier in other spaces. But I wanted to open that discussion for you all, so if restrict, if quarantines become not required. Uh, that that may be some of the reasons that folks were wearing masks or requiring masks is because. In those situations, we wouldn't have the quarantine, now, and if those quarantine requirements change. Changing someplace, so just wanted to get your thoughts, because we, as we know, we have an order in the city of Manatee Springs. And I just wanted to have a discussion about that, how it, what some steps for me to proceed. Tina and I talked about it briefly around the city.
I guess my question is, how much time is expended daily basis? For teachers and you guys walking around going, put a mask, put a mask on, I mean, seriously, you go to. A lot of the sporting events, which I went to last week, I went to Alamosa, and that, and very. Absolutely zero in the whole town, and so you sit there and watch. You know, the kids going here, not then come back here, and we're the only rural community doing it. You know, how much time do you guys expend a day going, putting a mask on?
I think our principals can, if you're okay with them, kind of, they spend more of the time, that's all right. Yeah, or just enforcing me. And and how successful is that?
We've had a lot of conversations with staff about that, just because how much is appropriate, like, what are we doing for learning environment, and we're constantly telling kids to fix their masks, so. We really raised one of these staff and kind of agree, say, once, beginning, teach, and then few bits of. To give gentle reminders, you know, we don't, we don't want to call it out in front of the class, but it's a challenge, it's an ongoing challenge, we give masks out at the doors every day. We always will provide masks if kids need them. So it's definitely a part of the school day.
It's not a part of the school days, if you pass, we're all different, and we've sent out a survey, and we actually got. A huge number of positives, we asked the parents' permission if they wanted us to enforce the mask. That their child wear a mask, and we keep a list and update that. Or not. And so it's pretty discreet, and so we we've heard. I mean, I I, that was how we approached it. And so I would, you know, in the morning, I'd remind them, you know, we strongly encourage you to wear a mask. It's it's not like, it's, you know, they got another thing, we want them to focus on.
I think it's getting harder, is is what I see as well, I think there's a tremendous amount of fatigue, both from. Staff and students also, having having to to constantly do it, I see it in. And here from staff as well, it's it's harder, and Justice here as well. And teachers, yeah, I was serious, a teacher or something.
I think one of the things at the high school, it's a little bit different than the middle school, the elementary school, because a lot of our. Our students are vaccinated, so that conversation is difficult with students to. You know, that that fine line where are you going to destroy this relationship with the student? Continually telling him to wear the mask on when he's vaccinated. So it's a struggle that, you know, the other thing I think about is how much learning we're we're losing in the classroom with masks on. Because so much of of learning is is seeing someone's face. And and hearing, you know, I have a very difficult time hearing what the teacher's saying when he has a mask on. So I think masks have a large impact on learn also within class. You know, the science supports us wearing masks. But it does impact the learning environment socially and.
It's constant, I think. Want to get some some thoughts from you all around. Mask, mask beyond. The winter holiday.
Well, Children's Hospital is full right now. With the highest volumes they've seen since the pandemic, well, general respiratory and COVID, and then there's a multi-inflammatory system that you get. After the child's had COVID, so now part of that's because they don't have enough nurses to take care of the patients. I mean, the the data on masks is really kind of, I mean, you know, studied from Bangladesh, or studied from Denmark or something, but it's just amazing, our CDC hasn't been a good study here in our country to know if they are. And Jesse's point, I mean, yeah, your your high school kids are smart enough, and they're testing boundaries, and really a reasonable follow the science boundary, if I've got. If I'm vaccinated times two, yeah, I mean. Like, I could get sick, but if I get sick, it's going to be nothing more than typically than influenza, and probably a mild influenza, at least that was my sport. So it's it's hard, there's there's probably not Lilia Ryder on yet, so which makes me sad to say that, because I just don't like to say that.
You love Ryder off.
So anyways, so, but I totally agree, I, you know, it might have been Justin that said, no, you remind them once, but but badgering the kids is not going to help them learn. And so I would be a hundred percent against that, so I can be conclusive on that point, so I think I think you're taking a common sense approach and doing the best you can, given the fact that we have a. A city mandate that. Probably didn't have as much discussion as we had tonight.
Well, I think that's where, you know, we can strongly, we can strongly encourage masks. And I think one of the reasons that we knew, I'm not saying that right now, and that's even not saying things change or something, but what I would say is that. After, so we had our vaccination clinic, the first one, it was well attended for elementary here in town. By the Christmas or the the winter holidays, excuse me, all all children will have had the opportunity to be vaccinated or double vaccinated. And they will have had COVID and or can continue to wear masks, so I I just want to get your perspective on what do you. What these, what what would be the best case scenario for this board? And for me, going to the city council in my role, and I know. Natalie, isn't really. Not that capacity, but really.
My personal opinion was, I would feel that we would. Not required, I mean, if students felt they need to wear it, then they wear it, it's kind of like anywhere else, but you look at ninety percent of the people that you run into in manatee that. Are required to wear a mask, and you run into the same amount of people once they cross that arch. That don't have a mask on, you know, that's, you know, I work for a company of twenty two hundred people. If you want to wear a mask, you wear a mask, but it's not mandated, and then you're out, you know, so, I mean, it's. I don't know if it's really at this point. Doing. That much good, because you see, it's. Thing we're going to find out is if you remove it, was it doing any good, because it's in place, then it's hard to tell. And I know it's a tough thing, I mean, it's a tough thing to mandate, it's a tough thing to tell whether it's hindering learning. Because also you could say that removing them is going to hinder learning, because it's going to spike some and not in others. You know, there are very many variables, and it's very difficult, that issue to put a finger on, but I don't know if the city has indicated. Where they think they might be going in December with.
Yeah, but we won't, we won't meet again until after our board meeting in December, so I wanted to kind of get your perspective on.
I mean, they can be invited from us. Right, so numbers don't, have not proved a situation where we could advocate, this is kind of second.
One thing is, if the requirements for quarantine come off, because before it was required, maybe potentially required, and. If I was wearing a mask and Gary was wearing a mask, then we wouldn't have quarantine, if that no longer happens anymore, then then. The the need for quarantine doesn't happen, so it's really would be, so if I'm sick, I'm staying home, Gary still gets to stay at school, even if he's masked or unmasked. So so the quarantine changes a lot around this masking, but right, it was double masking. In the other child state. Closest at school, that's what really changes, just period, I don't know, that Suzie, am I missing parts of that?
No, I mean, really, essentially, it was motivation to stay in school if you wore your mask. Just to keep your mask on, you can stay at school no matter what, really, and so now with quarantine's not there, there's. There's not that motivation, so I just think it's going to be, it's already gotten harder and harder to enforce, I just think it will be. Much harder to enforce.
Especially because one of the reasons this the city really went on is, I believe, was because at that point, elementary couldn't be vaccinated. And now they can be, and so we know not all parents will participate in that, but just.
How difficult is it for keeping kindergarten with a mask on?
It's pretty difficult.
It really affects their learning, probably, not, I'm not an expert in that, certainly, but I think that that really affects them more than a high school.
Social skills, social reading.
I think the number is like a third of patients, a third of parents, so they would get their five to eleven year old vaccinated, is what I most recently heard, so. It's better than zero, but it's not, it's not a majority.
When is the next vaccination, please? Oh, we have another one, it's the three weeks after, so it's the seventeenth of.
I think it's December fourteenth or fifteenth, we have, we have two schedules, and are we in two possible dates, I don't think it's been officially confirmed, which.
I think it's the fourteenth of the fifteenth, and it'll be again at the church across from me. Yeah, it was, it's probably a hundred.
Over a hundred, I think.
Over a hundred.
Mostly student staff.
No, pediatric.
Oh, yeah, awesome, that's great.
And then, and then we had a lot of adults too.
Yeah, they ran out of adult Pfizer by the time, it was at the end of the, like, and then, so. Adults get a booster, and whatever, I mean, so adults.
Out of every clinic we've had, this was the most that I saw that was our people, like, people that you recognized, people that had some sort of association with. The school district.
We changed the time, earlier we were doing it from ten to two, and we changed this time from twelve to four, so that parents could take their children home. And we did it on a Friday as well, but, yeah, kudos to our staff, because Eric and Susan, Jack, and a lot of people stepped in, volunteered.
I think there's another one this Friday. Uh, that one was, there was one planned for this week, but it had to be canceled because they didn't have the vaccine.
Fridays are good, because after the second vaccine, that's when both my fourteen year olds got sick, they didn't get sick, but they weren't feeling great for a couple days. That burn over the weekend, it's good if you if you can do it, if you can.
I think that one plateau is going to happen this first week in December, so we can see that. Even though our board meeting is is the day before, it's a council, we can have another discussion in December, I just wanted to get a pulse and back around. What you all, and our staff will continue to do as well as we can with the mask.
Thank you. Hey, work session adjourned, if there's nothing else, we'll be back at six for our regular session.